We've got something in common.
I can make more?
Let me show John.
Okay, I'll make more before that question.
Ron just got that for his birthday.
Then I showed her what I just got. I didn't get it for my birthday, though.
It's so warm in here. You two guys are warm.
Meeting will come to order. Please call and roll.
Deputy Mayor Pelosi?
Here.
Councilmember Baggett?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember DeCoursey?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Trump Manuel?
Here.
Councilmember Wells?
Oh, wait, excused. The mayor will be forthcoming, she's at another meeting. Okay, announcements, reports, presentations. Does the council have any of those three topics? We will go into Agenda Item 3A for Apple, Ordinance Regarding Property Tax. We have the Finance Director coming forward to tell us all about that.
Hello, council, good evening. I'm actually going to combine both Items A and B. We're going to combine the property tax discussion into the mid-biennial budget review into one. And I'm hoping to make it quick and hopefully kind of show you, and walk you through the next steps as far as legislation and the public hearing process goes for both of these pieces of legislation. So, the upcoming calendar and council action, this is really, we've got three pieces of legislation. So we'll have three ordinances that come out by the time we get to December 2nd, and two public hearings that we'll be holding at regular council meetings. The three ordinances will be the property tax levy, we'll have the year-end budget adjustment, which we call Budget Adjustment Number Four, and then we'll also have the mid-biennial budget adjustment, which is Budget Adjustment Number Five. And that is truing up the 2020 portion of the biennial budget. So tonight, I'm here just to present to you, talk about the property tax levy as well, discuss major revenue sources, which is part of our consideration when we did the mid-biennial budget adjustment, or our proposal for the mid-biennial budget adjustment, and then also talk high level about that. Next week, we'll have our first public hearing on the property tax levy and revenue sources, and hopefully then adopt our property tax ordinance also later that evening. On November 25th, we will come back with the year-end budget adjustment, or Budget Adjustment Number Four. And that is just to true up the 2019 budget. And then at the same time, we'll revisit the mid-biennial budget amendment, which is Budget Amendment Number Five. And then the following council meeting on December 2nd, we'll have a public hearing on the mid-biennial budget adjustment, and then adopt both the year-end adjustment and the mid-biennial budget adjustment. So Budget Amendments Four and Five. So there's a lot of moving pieces there. I am hoping that laying it out would kind of make it a little bit more clear while we're doing it in the order that we're doing with our statutory requirements for public hearings as well as ordinances. So with that, I'll jump right into our 2020 property tax levy. Every year, we have to re-levy our property taxes and we have to submit, we have to pass an ordinance and submit to King County. Usually by the end of November, this year it has to be filed with King County by December 2nd, which is why we're, this is the first piece of legislation that we bring to you. We redo our calculation every year, and this year our levy, our proposed levy is highlighted in yellow, and that is $22.3 million, almost $22.4 million. The way that we calculate that is we start with our 2019 property tax levy as our base. And then, of course, we're limited to the 1% maximum growth limit, which was $219,000, almost $219,000. We add our estimated new construction, that is not included in our 1% cap. So we get to add the new construction, which is that assessed valuation on new construction. And it's just an estimate at this point because it's the assessed valuation times our current, our 2019 property tax levy rate. So that's how they calculate the $243,000. And then estimated refunds that the county knows about at this point totals $15,000. So that gives us our estimated property tax levy for 2020 of $22.4 million. Now again, this is based on some of the estimates of new construction and the refunds. We don't get final numbers from King County until the very beginning of January of 2020. As a comparison, our rate, our levy rate per thousand assessed valuation for 2020 would be about $1.81, and that is compared to our current of $1.92. So our rate per thousand is actually decreasing, and that's really just a factor of the assessed valuation increasing at a greater rate than our 1% levy increase is allowed. And I just...
Would you repeat the current assessed rate, 190?
The dollar per 1,000 is $1.92.
$1.92, okay, thank you.
And just a little highlight, just to reinforce the idea that this is actually a $477,000 increase over our 2019 property tax revenue that we've levied. And that is almost 30% of our total general fund revenue sources. And so when we have, when we're looking at an $80.6 million budget to support general city services, and we have CPI that's right at 2.5% right now, being constrained with our primary revenue service being constrained at 1%, that's one of the reasons why, you know, you've heard in the past and continue to hear, when we get into our 21, 22 budget discussions, where that compression is coming from. And, you know, it's a major contributing factor to our fund balance and our long-term fiscal sustainability.
Does the preliminary information from King County, is that, can we wait on that, or is this time-sensitive?
So it's kind of what comes first, the chicken or the egg? They give us preliminary numbers, so we can adopt our ordinance before December 2nd. We have to levy our property tax and get it to King County by December 2nd. Once they get all those ordinances and levies in from all the cities and jurisdictions within King County, we get the final numbers then from King County at the beginning of January. So we are working with some estimated numbers from them, and then we don't actually get final numbers on the new construction and the refunds until the beginning of January. Now, these numbers are updated as of last Tuesday.
Counsel, any further statements, questions?
So with the, I'm going to move from the property tax into our mid-biennial budget review. And your agenda packet has a pretty comprehensive summary of all of the changes that we're proposing for the mid-biennial budget adjustment, as well as, it covers everything from the general fund and everything else citywide. Tonight, I'm really going to focus just on the general fund impacts, and we can, I'm going to discuss more, some of the more highlights of capital projects and the other fund impacts when we come back on the 25th. But in general, just the general highlight, the changes that are in the mid-biennial budget adjustment are really broken down into five different pieces. And that is, we're reviewing our significant revenue sources, looking at how they've performed in 2019, and are we on target, are we exceeding, are we underperforming, and then making sure that our 2020 projections are still on target. So if there is anything that we need to change, whether there's been any changes, any council action or legislative action that we need to true up our 2020 revenues, or if we're just trending, whether it's building permits, we would make adjustments at that time as well. So that's part of our mid-biennial review, and we'll get into that on the next slide. The next piece is the adoption of continuation of previously approved items. So any items that we've already have already been approved by council for the 2019 budget adjustment that have ongoing 2020 impacts, we're now picking those up and including them to the 2020 budget adjustment. We won't talk about this tonight, but this will be something that we talk about in two weeks from now, is really adjusting our capital projects. And that's getting our capital project budgets in alignment with actual project schedules, as well as any new funding sources that we've identified, or any shifting of sources for capital projects. Then we add any new programs that we're proposing to the council. And then the last piece is adjusting the 2020 beginning fund balances. And this is a little bit squishier of a cleanup piece, but this is taking all of the adjustments that we made in 2019, and truing up how those impact then the beginning fund balance for 2020. And again, those are still going to be estimates, how we actually end 2019. We won't know until the end of 2019. But these are our projections based on 2019 budget adjustments we've already made. So with that, I told you that part of our process is reviewing our general fund revenue and our primary revenue sources, and making sure that we're on track with our revenue projections for 2019, and then are we going to meet our targets for 2020. Our original budget for 2020 was $74.9 million in general fund revenue. 29% of that is property tax, 25% of that is sales tax, and then utility tax is the other, is 17%. So those are our three primary sources of revenue. Our property tax again is limited at 1%. And then our utility tax, just to note on that, $8.3 million comes from private utilities, which were capped at 6% max on those private utilities. And the other $4.1 million that we collect in utility tax is actually from our own city utilities. And our current, the current amount that we tax our city utilities is at 7%. And so the next slide shows the adjustments that we are proposing to make to the 2020 general fund revenues. The first column, you can see there's the $74.9 million in our original revenue budget, and we're proposing to add $1.4 million, $1,425,000 to the 2020 revenues. That's a $100,000 increase in property tax, which is just aligning up that property tax levy that we had just talked about a couple of slides ago. Our original budget was $21.9 million, we're adding $100,000, assuming that we have approximately a 98% collection rate in 2020. We're adding $200,000 for business license fees. This is a reflection of the increase, the fee schedule increase that we had made in 2019. An increase of $200,000 to certain permit fees as a reflection of, we also had done a rate fee adjustment earlier. And we had done a study in 2018, some changes went into effect 2019. And based on where we're trending with collections on some of those revenues, we're proposing a $200,000 increase. So that's the $400,000, that's business licenses and permit fees grouped together. And then the largest one is the $925,000, and that is the extension of the streamlined sales tax mitigation. The legislature, the state legislature had extended that, those mitigation fees through 2021. So we currently have no dollars budgeted for streamlined sales tax mitigation, and we're adding $925,000 back for 2020, which was a nice little bump. Yeah, it was great. So those are the revenues, so proposed changes on the expenditure side. Again, this is, we're just focusing on general funds, so there are some other changes citywide, but these are the most, these are the impacts to the general fund. We are truing up our 2020 budget to reflect the changes for the third, the second and third school resource officers. We had amended our agreements and extended our contract with Auburn School District. So this is to reflect new revenue for the third school resource officer, and then to, and the costs associated with a new officer as well out at the schools. We also are adjusting our SCORE costs, our agency costs. We got our 2020 agency costs from SCORE. The executive board had voted on the budget for 2020, and there was a little bit of savings based on budget. I want to add a caveat, though, that Federway isn't gone yet. They will be leaving SCORE in January of 2020. And beyond 2020, it's a little uncertain. So we want to make sure that we're being, we continue to be conservative with our SCORE budget in moving beyond 2020 until we know how things are going to come out in the wash with SCORE no longer being part of the owner agencies. We are adjusting down our LEFT contributions. This is actually, we had done a true-up earlier in the year, we made a reduction in the 2019 budget as well. This was truing up our general fund contribution to the LEFT One Fund to cover healthcare costs for LEFT One retirees. We trued it up to more closely match what our actuaries are looking, what our funding, our annual funding for our LEFT One benefits. Not only were we, are we truing this up based on what our actuaries are recommending, but it's actually based on our historical costs. We have been budgeting a little bit more into that LEFT One retire refund than we've needed, and so we're reducing the general fund adjustment down.
Matt, could you talk to me a little bit about the trend line for the existing ballots of that fund? I mean, does it, and how this will impact that?
Yeah, so this isn't OPEB, this is the retire refund, which is a little bit, so there's not, there's not the pension liability. This is just based on actual monthly healthcare fees and the reimbursement for those costs that we were, we're way overfunding that fund. So it's mostly a pay-as-you-go kind of program. And so we budget in the general fund what we anticipate. We just have been doing a straight transfer to that fund based on what we think we're going to pay. And we've been budgeting and transferring much more than we've needed to.
So there's not a separate, discreet fund for that, it's part of the general?
There is a separate fund, there is a separate fund for, I'm going to have to, I'm not sure if we have a separate fund here in Auburn for LEFT One. It is accounted for completely separately. And this is just the general fund's contribution. If it is a separate fund, it's funded entirely by the general fund. Yes, so it's accounted for separately, completely funded 100% by the general fund, correct?
Mr. Holman?
For people in the audience and people listening at home, LEFT stands for Law Enforcement and Firefighters, Law Enforcement Officer and Firefighters Insurance Program. And Plan One refers to any police officer or firefighter in Washington State that was hired prior to 1975. '74, '75, within a few months. And it pays for 100% of their medical. Now then, we carry insurance for them that covers 80 to 90% of their medical expenses after retirement. But beyond that, since 100% is paid for, that remaining 5 to 15% has to be paid for out of our general fund. The reason it's going down is just strictly the fact that we're old now, and there's getting to be fewer of us. So having been a beneficiary of that...
Yeah, that's something that we like to keep our eye on because...
Is, we're also costing more, too.
Exactly, exactly.
But we're gaining steam now. Most police officers retire, firefighters, after 30 years. Those of us that were LEFT have probably been retired close to 20 years now.
Larry?
Yes, so Councilmember Baggett and myself both serve on that board. And, you know, I will just say that, you know, while we go through those individual expenses that are identified by a number, not by an individual's name, I have to say that the board is pretty judicious. We're making sure that, you know, that this is accountable, that it's within policy, that, you know, that we are following all the rules. But I'm glad to see that we're taking care of our retired firefighters and police officers, so that's a good thing. Thank you, Larry.
And I just wanted to add, well, I served on that board for several years as well. And we do really look after our man and, you know, police officers in our fire department. And the family also, you know, if there's something that is either they've overpaid or something like that, they're very quickly to let us know. And as well, the other way, you know, as well. So when I left, we didn't have very many left on that list. They either were passing away, or they no longer, well, we didn't have that many left on that committee, on that... Am I not correct on that?
That's correct.
It's kind of getting down to where you're not going to be able, you're not going to have to take care of those people.
John said, "They're getting older," as are we.
Thank you.
Yeah, I resemble that.
I prefer it.
Okay.
A pretty significant increase that we are making is to reflect the collective bargaining unit agreements for our police unions. There were four, the $776,000, it covers four CBAs that were passed and adopted and approved in 2019. And that reflects the amount above and beyond what we had originally budgeted for in 2020. Assuming any, when we originally built the 2020 budget, we'd assumed increases, the $776,000 is the piece above what we had built as contingency. And then the last piece is the Skip Fiscal Agent Agreement. This is just to pull in and recognize the revenue and the program costs associated with the city taking on the fiscal agent responsibilities of the Skip program. And then this is a summary of the general fund changes, the impact that the mid-biennial budget adjustment has on the general fund. They're right as budgeted right now, there's a slightly more than $7 million ending fund balance. We add in our revenue adjustments that we talked about earlier, the $1.4 million, less the new program and existing program expenditures, and then add back in the program revenues associated with those expenditures. And then the ending fund balance true-up for 2019, and we are looking at an estimated beginning, or ending fund balance to the 2020 general fund of $11.3, almost $11.4 million.
Well done.
For now, yes. It looks, it looks good now, and there's a lot of true-up that will take place, especially once we get to the end of 2019 and see where we actually end. And then just to point out, because that 2019 fund balance adjustment does look so large, that is really the same things, the large adjustments that you're seeing now. We added, in 2019, we had an adjustment for additional streamlined sales tax mitigation money, as well as we had our LEFT, we made the adjustment, our reduction to our LEFT expenditures. And then we also upward adjusted our property tax revenue for 2019 as well. So next steps, next week, at the council meeting, we will have a public hearing on the property tax ordinance. Hopefully, we will adopt the property tax ordinance. And then we will come back at the next study session on November 25th to discuss the year-end budget adjustment and go more comprehensively than mid-biennial budget adjustment.
John?
Quick question. And I'll, this is under the category of add budget authority for new programs. And I direct this to Parks Director Daryl Faber. I see that we're going to replace 24 golf carts at the golf course. Fine and dandy, we're bringing in money, we're operating in the black, that's great. That's what we had always hoped for. My question is, I thought in previous years, when we discussed the golf carts, that we had programmed that in to replace about a quarter or a third every year as a program budget. Why is this a new program?
Yeah, it was, in the last two-year budget cycle, it was missed. That's why we came back once in 2018 for 19, and now 19 for 20. So we did pay the money into the MNO fleet to pay for the carts, but the expenditure wasn't accounted for in the budget process. So every year, we replace one quarter of our fleet, and in the fifth year, we don't do anything. And this is the fourth of, coming up to be the fourth of five years. So it was, the revenue was set aside from the golf course to fleet to make the purchase, but the authority to purchase them wasn't in the budget.
So the money's there, we're just saying, okay.
Correct, it's been funded.
Thank you. I know we talked about programming the budget and...
If you recall, we did the same thing about a year ago, because it was a two-year budget cycle, when we missed golf, thought MNO was doing it, MNO thought golf was doing it, and it was missed.
It happens.
Thank you.
Along those same lines, Daryl. 24 carts, what's the, what's the singular price per cart?
About $4,200.
Yeah, that's what I was, I kind of calculated 43 here. Is that pretty average? That seems like a lot of money for...
No, it's, it's a very good price because of the continued relationship with Club Car and the way we've been revolving our fleet over. And then we also get a credit back on the 24 that we turn in. So when we divest ourselves of our carts, and so, yeah, we, it's a fair market rate, better than fair.
Good, good.
Well, that's it for me, unless you guys have any more questions?
Counsel, questions, comments, statements?
I have one other question, that's page 10 of 84. The second paragraph, third bullet, third bullet, and engineering is going to have to answer this question, I'm sure. So where is that AC main replacement project on Lee Hill?
So I don't think I could list off every single street that it's on, but there is a neighborhood up in the kind of northwestern area of Lee Hill that still has asbestos cement pipe, and this is replacing that asbestos cement pipe.
Good, good. And how did engineering discover that that needed to be replaced?
So it's been on our list for replacements for quite a while, as we've been working to remove all asbestos cement pipe from our system. And I believe that this is the last area.
Thank you, Enger, thank you. Any other questions? Welcome, Mayor. So, thank you very much. Now I'm going to turn the meeting over to Councilmember DeCoursey. He's the Chair of Public Works Committee. And the way we operate is, the items in under Roman numeral four will be enacted by Claude. And I will try and stay out of it this time, Claude.
Thank you. So the item on the agenda we're going to be looking at now is Resolution 5466, the Auburn Symphony Orchestra. Daryl?
Symphony Orchestra, Daryl.
It's set up here. Well, there's going to be a video. First off, I'd like to invite up Cindy Lean, who's the President of the Auburn Symphony Board, as well as Rachel Perry, the Executive Director of the Auburn Symphony Orchestra. They're actually the stars of this show, as they should be. The contract does go through our Parks Arts and Recreation Division, and so that's why I'm before you today. And in your packet is Resolution 5466, which would authorize the mayor to enter into our annual contract with the Auburn Symphony for promotional services and educational services. And it's the same contract as we've had the last few years, as well as a similar scope of work. And also in your packet is the draft contract, the scope of services, and their 2019 annual report, which they're going to report on tonight. I can personally attest, it's been a great year with the symphony. They've got new leadership, both Wesley as a conductor and the team here. So, and if you look at the board members behind us, they reflect the best of Auburn, and I think our symphony shows the best of Auburn. So I'm really excited to bring this contract before you again this year and introduce. I think Cindy's going to kick it off, and then we'll move over to Rachel and a quick video at the end. Hopefully, the sound works.
Thank you, Daryl. Good evening. We are grateful for the opportunity to present you with an update on the exciting events and growth of the symphony organization in Auburn. This past June, we elected a new executive board, including myself as president, Bill Coward as Vice President, Deanna Siler as Secretary, and Bob Sporel, Treasurer. This past year has been busy, as we completed our first season, and a very successful one, with Wesley Schultz as our music director and conductor, and Rachel Perry as our executive director. They've done a really fine job. Wes and Rachel have brought new ideas, enthusiasm, and an abundance of excitement to the table, and we consider our organization and the Auburn community lucky to have them on our team. In addition, this past September, we hired Christy Karaviglio, Communications and Events Manager. Christy has ten years of graphic design experience, ten years of volunteering with the ICA Art Docent Program, and she is passionate about arts advocacy. Christy is involved with many community art organizations in Auburn and Kent. Christy works part-time with us, including participating in and managing special events. We are thrilled to have Christy on our team and look forward to further utilizing her time and talents to the benefit of Auburn Symphony Orchestra and the community. We held our annual strategic planning retreat for the Board of Directors this past August at Green River College. It was a full-day retreat facilitated again this year by Dr. Ruth Camp. We worked through various sessions to plan for the future, both short-term and long-term. We worked in breakout groups to revisit our goals in the areas of development, audience development, and education and community outreach, resetting, restructuring, and simply reinforcing each of the previously set goals. Let me tell you, the groups were buzzing with ideas and excitement as they collaborated on how to educate all ages about the symphony and spread the word. We have a very active board of sixteen people, many of whom are in the audience this evening. They comprise five committees, who are all very active and convening on a regular basis throughout the year. They work very hard to grow the arts in our community, and specifically, the Auburn Symphony Orchestra. On behalf of the Auburn Symphony Orchestra and the Board of Directors, I want to thank you for your past support and ask you for your continued future support. Now I would like to introduce Rachel Perry, our Executive Director.
Hello, everyone. Before I get into some details, I want to show our quick video that we have here. This past year, we had a partnership with PLU Media Lab, and communication students came to several of our concerts and filmed and photographed them last year and put together a couple of short videos for us. So this is one that, if you were brand-new to the symphony, this is what we want to show you to tell us about this.
I feel it's kind of a secret of like, how good this orchestra is tucked into the city of Auburn.
We have a really great orchestra right here that you can come see. And so it's really important to us to bring a high level of music that everyone can enjoy and everyone feels a part of.
I believe art and culture is a really important part of who we are as people. And I think, you know, having that be available to a community, it helps them, you know, connect with a part of themselves.
I think Auburn Symphony really brings the community together, both in the concert hall and in classrooms. And you really get both sides of the coin when you have a performing orchestra and an education program that enhances your community.
We're working on expanding, for example, our education programs, that we want to bring our musicians and music to the schools. We also try to bring the students in here to the auditorium. We're also trying to be out in the community so that people can see us on a number of different planes, so to speak.
We also have a robust chamber series. Those are smaller, more intimate, with maybe four or five players, that really give a different experience. And then we have outdoor concerts in the summer, and those are just a really nice way to enjoy kind of a different musical experience.
I think the Auburn Symphony Orchestra is unique because it hires and utilizes some of the best freelance talent in the area.
We are sort of a cultural jewel. We just hope to have a strong presence in Auburn, that everyone in Auburn knows that there's a symphony, whether they come or not, they're aware of us.
You will get to enjoy not only world-class music from professional musicians, but you'll get to really revel in the sound that engulfs you from the symphony.
To have a full-size symphony orchestra in a house of this size is a pretty remarkable experience, and you just, you need to go, just come once and you'll, you'll be a fan, for sure.
Whatever experience you have is the right experience. And so we just want to be a place for people to come and hear music and take that couple hours in their life to put the phone aside and the internet aside and politics aside and, and just listen to some, some beauty.
So and that music that you heard in the background is actually Auburn Symphony playing. It's the first concert from October 2018 that Wes conducted. So I'll get into some more of the education and community engagement programs and kind of give you an update on, on the last year, as well as things that have come up new this year. So in August 2018, we reformed the Education Committee, which is focused on education and community engagement for all ages. Last year, we partnered with the Auburn Library and presented a free, one-hour interactive program for young elementary kids, and we are going to continue that this year and do some more programs with them. And we recently received a grant specifically for those programs to build up a curriculum of sorts to be able to expand on those. Last summer, we had a free concert at the Auburn Farmers Market in conjunction with having a table there as a nonprofit. And that was a really great opportunity to meet new people in our community, get the word out about us, and then also obviously spread our love of music. And that was actually born out of the same meeting last year, where the Auburn Farmers Market did their 2018 annual report, and they reported sky-high numbers there. And so I thought, well, that's exactly where Auburn Symphony has to be, if that's where our community is. So we've also tried out different venues for chamber concerts, including Go Brewing, which we, this past summer, we had one planned there, and we also had one planned at Mary Olson Farm, and unfortunately, due to a downpour, had to move that one to Go also. And both were sold out and had a really great response from people, being able to enjoy music in a different atmosphere, being able to, you know, eat your burger and drink your beer and, and enjoy professional-level music. And we have another, we actually have another concert at Go, a week from Friday, which we're all invited to. It's going to be really fun. It's four cellos performing. So some programs that we continue to do and have done for many, many years. We offer ten-dollar tickets to music students and their family members. And so we have an email list to music teachers that we encourage them to, to spread that word to their students so that they can come enjoy the Auburn Symphony. And we also continue to do pre-concert talks with Dave Beck. He's not only a cellist in our symphony, but a host on Classical King FM, so extremely knowledgeable and really fun and brings a lot of great knowledge and insight to the music just before people go into the concert hall. New this year is actually, just happened last month, surrounding our first concert of the season, featured Pictures at an Exhibition, which is a piece that was written to make you feel as if you're walking through a museum and looking at different pieces of art. And we partnered with the Interurban Center for the Arts at Green River, and their art docents went into two elementary schools' fifth-grade classrooms, and those students created art in response to the music, to Pictures at an Exhibition. And then we displayed the students' artwork in the lobby at the concert. And so it was a really great multimedia experience for the concert-goers, but also, again, we're getting, getting into classrooms and, and doing these programs with students. And then coming up in December, at our holiday concert on December ninth, we are going to have a side-by-side performance with the Auburn Riverside High School Orchestra. Some of their students, orchestra and band students, will be performing right alongside the professional players for the first two pieces of the concert, and they're going to get to rehearse with them, and it will be a really special experience. So I want to thank all of you, as Cindy did, for your past support and continued support, and be happy to take any questions you have.
Any questions from anybody? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Claude. I'd like to refer to page thirty-nine of eighty-four. Well, actually, just go to thirty-eight first. I'm sorry. Eight, thirty-nine. If we're going to have periods ending a sentence, let's do it either one or the other way. Some have identifiable periods to end the sentence, and some do not. So I think the customary would be to put periods in where they're omitted. And that's, there's an item, on, item number six on page thirty-eight is that way, and then page thirty-nine, there are several. So if you could make that change. And then if you turn over to page forty, the second bullet from the bottom, the twenty-two thousand, I'd like that extended out to point zero zero, because on page thirty-nine, all of those figures do have that point zero zero. And then there, there is one sentence on page forty that needs a period.
Those are scribe type errors, not anything that is really impactful of, of the language of the contract.
It may not be impacted, however, it's sloppy contract work. Either you do it one way or the other. That's all I'm asking. On page forty-one, just to comment, on number of tickets for students, that's kind of low for a community of eighty thousand, only two-hundred-and-forty-six students. So it would be nice if that could be upped, increased. Then on page forty-two, press coverage, I would recommend that, we've got some pretty large HOAs in town. If we could maybe encourage them to put some information on the symphony schedule in their, in their communication to their residents. That's just an additive.
Any other questions or comments from anyone? Councilmember Holman, then Councilmember Trump, maybe one.
Quick comment, I could never say no to Nancy Colson.
I just have a comment. Thank you for giving us all the statistics and the numbers on page forty-one and, and on forty-two. It's always nice to see. And I was, I went to one of your workshops a couple of years ago, and it was really fun to brainstorm on how we could bring the youth involved in this. And it looks like you guys have done some things, and I'm really excited to see what you're doing. And let's get these kids going, because I think they're our, our future, you know, and this is, this is great. Thank you for everything you're doing and continuing to do. Thank you.
And I'm really pleased to see the, the legacy fund, it was a great addition, a great move for somebody who served the symphony for, for twenty-two years. And Lee and I actually grew up about thirty miles apart in upstate New York, so we both know where our hometowns are. Any other questions or comments, Mayor?
I would just say that I agree with, once you have been to one of the performances, you're kind of hooked. I would have loved to have gone to a couple of them this year. Unfortunately, every time, it's either on a, on a night that I have already been committed to something else or I'm out of town. And I noticed you were talking about December ninth as the holiday event, and unfortunately, Monday nights are our council meetings.
Yeah.
So I believe, last year, you did go to the Rockin' Christmas Eve.
Good production, very good.
So it's not because of lack of interest, I just want you to know.
Yeah, I just have a, a comment that I've been following the symphony over twenty years. And in fact, I introduced the symphony to the Boeing Company at the initial funding. That has worked out very well for the symphony ever since then. So keep up the good work and keep us all inspired. And hopefully, we'll have some Boston pop-style segments in the near future.
If I might just make a quick comment about bringing more kids in and getting them involved. We have a lot of ideas on the table, of things that we want to do to the kids, programming. We had some programs that we're working on implementing with instruments, used instruments, Instrument Zoo, a library of books about music and instruments that we're working to incorporate with instruments. We've got a lot, a lot going on in our heads and, and on paper in our planning sessions. So I think you're going to see more involvement with the kids, and we're hoping to do maybe some park concerts for the communities, various communities, that would be very kid-friendly to get them interested and jazzed up about symphony music.
If I can add something about scheduling, our, many of our musicians come from the Pacific Northwest Ballet Orchestra, that's our, where our core players come from, and December is Nutcracker season, and we are at the mercy of the Nutcrackers, so that's why it's held on Monday night, otherwise, we would probably choose a different night of the week. It's, we have a great turnout regardless.
I look forward to forwarding Resolution 5466 next Monday evening for another year of cooperation. of cooperation between the city and our great symphony. Thank you.
Rachel, and Cindy, and Nancy, and the rest of the board, thank you for what you do in bringing this wonderful entity to our community. Thank you.
Great job.
Next, we will have orders number 6742, couponing adjustments.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She needs...
Good evening, Lisa Toba, Utilities Engineering Manager. Tonight, we're proposing some changes to the Auburn City Code to make administration of payback agreements more efficient, both for city staff and for the developers. As you may recall, a payback agreement is where a developer can recoup some of the costs of building a facility extension across their frontage that other properties may connect up to. Here on this slide, this red line here represents perhaps a fictional water main that the developer on the right-hand side installed. And if the other properties on the other side of the street connect to that, then they would pay back the developer for their share of the cost of that water main. Last year, we made some additional code changes. You may remember that revised the process so that we could let those other property owners know earlier in the process what potential payback agreement costs would apply to their properties. Basically, it was to start it at the time that the construction of that facility extension began, so that they would have time to prepare for any development or other desire to connect up to that facility. So tonight, what we're going to be talking about is some additional changes to further incorporate the payback agreement into, pardon me, into the FAC process, so the facility extension process. First of all, we want the developer to include in the FAC what facilities will be included and what will not be included in the payback agreement. And when the developer executes that FAC agreement, they're acknowledging that eligibility. Second, the time period of when we would begin bringing that payback agreement to finalization, to finalize it, would start only after the FAC was completed. So the developer will complete their project, and then we'll collect all the costs and get that information out to the property owners. Third, the developer will be required to submit those final costs within 120 days after they complete their FAC, or they'll forfeit their right to even have a payback agreement. This way, it gives us plenty of time to be able to get that information, those final cost numbers, to the property owners. And fourth, once the developer executes the payback agreement, we will schedule a public hearing within 90 days after we receive that agreement. This gives us time to inform those other property owners about the payback agreement and the amounts that they'll owe, and it'll give them time to review the materials so that they have, can bring any questions that they have to a public hearing. And so next week, what we'd like to do is to have you consider whether to adopt Resolution 6742, which will include these changes in the city code. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
If a developer does forfeit, is there any reconsideration ever given for that, or is it just a done deal?
The code does not provide for any appeal of that, no.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next up is our transportation impact fee update. James.
Good evening, everybody. James Webb, City of Auburn, Senior Traffic Engineer. And I am, as you correctly stated, here to talk to you about our proposed update to our transportation impact fee scheduled for 2020. Impact fees are based on the projects that are included in the tip. As I'm sure you're all aware, the original tip that goes into effect for the time period 2020 through 2025 was adopted last summer. And the past month, we brought a modification to that tip to you for adoption, and we made some changes to the projects. Based on that current tip, we're proposing to modify the impact fees to align them with the needs that are identified in the tip based on the project list. What that means is about a 10% increase in our, over our current impact fees that are in effect during 2019. And that is based on a increase in the funding gap in the tip that is identified for those traffic impact fees. So based on the list of projects, the previous tip identified a need to collect approximately $20 million in impact fee revenue over the six-year period that's covered by the tip. With the changes to the projects that were included in the full update and the modification, that funding gap has increased by approximately $4 million to about $24 million now. So to reflect that increased need, there is a proposed increase in the traffic impact fees to cover that increased funding need. And if you go to the table one at the end of the memo, that includes a list of all the projects in the tip that are included in the impact fee program. Now, you'll see that not every project in the tip is included in the impact fee program. Only projects that increase capacity and are needed to accommodate future growth are eligible for impact fees. So you'll see on this list, none of the preservation projects are included in this list. So there's none of the P category projects because those aren't adding any capacity, so aren't eligible for impact fees. The first block of projects, which is the majority of them, were, are projects that are included, that were included in the previous tip. So were already included in the previous impact fee program. And then the two shorter lists at the bottom of that page identify new projects that were added to the tip, of which there were four, and the projects that were removed from the tip. And we discuss those when we brought the tip to you for consideration. Majority of those projects are removed because they've been completed or combined into the scope of other projects. We did some consolidation. So we look at that funding need, and we split that out over the number of trips that we anticipate are going to, additional new trips, growth trips, that are anticipated to occur in that same six-year time period. And then we basically just divide that funding need over that number of trips to come up with that cost per trip. And that's where that, that number comes from. Based on the 2019 tip, so the fee that's in effect this year, that fee per trip is just under $4,250. With the approximate 10% increase, we're looking to increase those by $423 per trip for a total per trip cost of $4,661.34. And with your adoption of the new fee schedule, that would go into effect on January 1 and affect any development projects that are seeking building permits after January 1. That is the citywide fee. We also have reduced fees for developments that are occurring in the downtown urban center. And there is a map showing the boundary of that center included, as figure one in the memo. The purpose of those reductions is to reflect kind of the more urban development environment within that area, which typically results in a reduction in vehicle trip generation because there's more non-motorized infrastructure available and closer proximity to jobs and retail and restaurant opportunities and transit. So we provide a reduction in the fees to reflect the lower vehicle trip generation rates in that area. We also have a separate rate for the Lakeland Hills community. That was adopted by resolution back in 1998, before the rest of the impact fee program was developed citywide. That resolution ties those impact fee rates to the Consumer Price Index. And as you heard from finance, in the past 12 months, that's running 2.5, we see 2.6%. So we're proposing to increase the Lakeland Hills fees by that 2.6% to keep it in line with CPI. And then lastly, and referring to the other attachment in the memo, this is a comparison that City of Bellingham has historically put together. It compares the trip, fee per trip rates through a multitude of communities in Western Washington. You'll see that while we are moving slightly up the list from where we are now, we are still comparable to several other local communities, including City of Kent, Puyallup, and Covington. And the other thing I'll point out on that figure is, while the number in the box shows our proposed 2020 fee, the rest of the fees for the other jurisdictions are, have not been updated yet. So these reflect all of their current 2019 fees. And I think it's reasonable to assume that for the majority of these agencies, they will also be seeking to increase their traffic impact fees beyond where they stand today. But that's something that Bellingham hasn't completed their task and published their updated list yet. So that was all I had in the memo. Anyone have some questions?
So James, there's a 10% increase. Is that low-end, high-end, normal? What would you consider that to be, aggregately, the other options?
It's hard to say because it really does vary considerably from agency to agency depending on what they change in their tip every year, and what portion of those tip projects are capacity projects, and how much of each of those capacity projects they're attributing to a growth need. I think if you look back historically at what we've done with our tip, it's certainly in line with changes that we've made in the past. And, you know, there were several, several years ago, we actually saw a slight decrease in our impact fees to reflect what was changing in the tip at that time. So I think this is consistent with, it's certainly consistent with the needs that we're showing currently. And I think it's consistent with changes that we've made in the past to the, to the impact fee program, and broadly consistent with what other agencies are doing.
Councilmember Trump, may you?
So on page 68, the chart with all of the cities on there?
Uh huh.
And you have the arrow, a little box, and it says the proposed 2020 fee per trip for Auburn is, it's got the figure there. Why are you comparing it to Bellevue?
It's not intended to point as a comparison to Bellevue, it's intended to show where we would slot in to the chart. So we would fall between Bellevue and Bainbridge based on their 2019 fees and our 2020 proposal.
Okay. Thank you for clearing that up.
Any questions for James? For some reason, I would tell my little child, he's watching minions running all over the floor. Thank you, James.
Thanks, Claude.
Well, I didn't, but now I do.
That was the Halloween dress-up thing that we did. It was perfect in character. Okay, Jacob and Jeff, on a facility extension permit fees.
Good evening, Council, Deputy Mayor, Mayor. So for the record, Jeff Tate, Director of Community Development, and...
Jacob Swilling, City Engineer.
And so Community Development and Public Works is providing a joint presentation tonight on facility extension fees update. And we're doing this together because these are projects and areas of work that we're joined by the hip and we work together on, both departments. So we're going to go through a few slides. Slideshow is in your packet. We've added a couple of additional slides just to show some visuals for what we're talking about. And get started then. So first of all, I thought it was important to just talk about what a facility extension is. In our lingo, we talk about FACs a lot. So an FAC is a facility. So we define that as a public road or utility, essentially. So when we talk about public roads, that includes the sidewalks, the street lighting, the landscaping, the curb, the gutter, those things, as well as the water, the sewer, and the storm. And we call that a facility because when new development is proposed, or there's significant redevelopment on property, developers build or rebuild facilities. And when they're done with that, they hand it over to the city, and we maintain it. So an example here, a visual on the right, is a subdivision in Auburn. And while it's hard to see everything that's below the ground, the footprint there before any houses are there is a pretty good indicator of kind of what facilities look like. And besides the road network that you see there, and that there's sidewalks in there, there's also a storm pond. So all those things to support that subdivision that ultimately become the city, in the city's ownership and the city's responsibility to maintain. Well, we're going to get to a few slides that talk about fees. And I thought it would be important to describe what is the kind of work that the city does that goes into an FAC. So there's two parts to that. There's review of a proposal, and then there's inspection of the project while it's under construction. So private developers prepare highly engineered, highly technical documents and plans for the city to review as part of its, their development proposal. So we spend a lot of time reviewing the work of civil engineers. Again, we inspect the construction before water lines and sewer lines are covered up. You know, we own and operate those roads that are being built, so we want to manage the transfer of that ownership from private property to public ownership. And we want to ensure that there's high-quality infrastructure that is coming into our ownership. We want to ensure that we have high quality because high quality means it'll last a long time. And as we all know, it costs a lot of money to maintain infrastructure. And if we compromise in these areas, the impact ends up getting shifted to taxpayers and ratepayers. So we take this work very serious as it's going through the review and construction So during the review, I'm going to show a couple images here in a second, but it's probably the most detailed and comprehensive part of development review. Materials are technical, they're voluminous, and there's a lot of disciplines at the city to look at, all of these drawings and these technical documents. So planners look at them, folks from Valley Regional Fire Authority, our storm engineers, our water engineers, our sewer engineers, our building staff, and transportation engineering. And once it gets through that process and something is approved, ultimately, Jacob as the city engineer signs off on the plans, it goes into construction. And there are literally constructor, construction inspectors, city inspectors on those job sites day in and day out because we really need the ability to see what's happening while construction is occurring. And some of that remains visible, but a lot of that is very invisible in the end because it's underground. And I think this last point on this page is important. There's a tension that naturally exists. It's not unique to Auburn. The tension is that a private developer is seeking to lower their cost. And that's totally understandable as a private business. And we're seeking to ensure high quality, and quality can sometimes lead to cost. So that tension is something that we work routinely on between city and developer. And there's just four slides here of examples of some plans, a plan sheet. So nothing in particular is special about any one of these. So nothing in particular is special about any one of these four. More than anything, it's to show that this, that each one of these is one plan sheet for a project. So this plan sheet, and then there's a, this is a plan sheet for a different project, a plan sheet for a different project, and, and details on yet a different project. Point of those slides is to, is one, to say that there's a lot of detail on any one sheet. There's a lot of time that gets spent at looking at one sheet. And you could take one of these projects and pull the whole plan set, and you'll see that there's 80 of those sheets. It's, it's a rigorous process to go through for really the developer to design it, but for our city staff to review it. A lot of time goes into making sure that all of these specifications are detailed out because if they're not, when you get into construction, there becomes confusion. And we don't want that confusion or that tension to exist once they're spending money on the ground. And these are just a few pictures of showing sort of the inspection and, and, you know, the nature of how much is going on on a given piece of property. Again, dirt is being moved every day constantly. We need to make sure that we have erosion control measures in place. We need to make sure that, you know, the right bed or of material is put below a utility line. We need to make sure the same thing for roads. So that work is very dynamic. It's changing every day, and inspectors are there every day. I'll turn it over to Jacob, who may wanna, that stuff gets to be pretty detailed.
Well, this is showing more inspection. In fact, so the inspection's not always the earthwork and the, the road building, but sometimes it's highly specialized and technical work. In this case, you see the building of a sewer lift station that's actually been recently completed by a developer in town. And this is a several-month process that starts with building a hole and trying to keep it from filling up with water, pumping out all the water, making sure the water's taken care in a safe way, and then actually lowering the lift station in itself and then wiring it all up. And I hope that some of you had an opportunity, if not all of you, an opportunity to tour some of our lift stations because that's where you really get to see the impact of, of what our inspectors are making sure gets built right.
Jacob?
Yes.
Back to the last slide, please. So Auburn has a great big crane over here. Yeah? Do we have a, an Auburn inspector there almost daily? Right?
We have different inspectors there all the time. Cranes are something that are regulated under the State Labor and Industry Division. So they're present too, to make sure it's installed correctly, make sure that it, it remains safe in place.
I thought it was very impressive, I think it was Friday, the crane was operating. Well, I was, from my office, I can view the crane, and I, I look at some spots up there on the very top. I thought I saw movement. Sure enough, there were three guys on the big walkway up there. You know, getting work prepared, I suppose, or something.
And that, that's a unique project. And I turn to Jeff because we not only have our inspectors from the engineering department that are out there inspecting the civil work there, but also building inspectors that are out there constantly watching the different, the different inspection points for the buildings.
And there are, you know, there are areas of discipline where there are outside inspectors, like state inspectors, elevators are a good example, cranes. And also, for some specialized types of construction activity, like curing of concrete for a, a big foundation for a building, we require third-party inspectors also to participate in that process and provide us with daily reports about how concrete's curing so that we get to the right strength.
They were, they were lifting these big buckets with the funnel in, at the bottom, making pillars, filling in pillars. Yeah, so that, that is amazing.
Yeah, big operation.
Big operation.
Customer Brown?
Yeah, just wanted to comment about that tension that you referred to acknowledging that, but how important it is for, you know, for the city, for the state LNI inspectors, for there to be oversight in these construction projects. We know recently in New Orleans, a facility that is under construction, that part of it collapses and people get hurt or die. And so this is important work that has been done. And just appreciate the fact that there is tension, acknowledging that, but that it's an important thing.
Staying on that same line a little bit, so looking at, the developers looking at trying to lower the cost, and we've got plans, have to build the plans, we have inspections, make sure that we're building the plans and that the protocols are being followed. What types of, I guess I'll say inaccuracies are we seeing in relation to developers trying to lower their cost while they're on a job site and perhaps maybe not building the plan according to spec or whatever? Not quite understanding how the dynamics of that's working?
It can range from something as simple as maybe not having enough traffic control that we'd like to see out of the roadway. So we come out and say, no, we need to put more cones out, more signs out, and put more advanced notice out, more of the, more of the changeable message signs. Those ones are usually pretty innocent. Other ones could be like Jeff says, we do core samples of a roadway, and sometimes we'll find that doesn't meet the specs, so we'll have to redo a portion of the roadway, a portion of the sidewalk, or compaction testing, make sure that the underground soils are being compacted to the, to what they're supposed to be. Sometimes it's just the assumptions that went into the design. Sometimes the assumptions are conservatively hopeful that maybe that groundwater won't fill up that hole they're trying to dig, or it won't fill up as quickly as it actually does. And when they get out there, they start digging, they see, we see that they actually need to have more pumps than they assumed when they first hit the design. So it's, it's a, it's a, it's a big range of different...
Are we present and participating in progress meetings that the contractor's holding? Like on a project like Across the Street?
Yes. Yes, we have regular progress meetings with the contractor.
That's the GC's progress meeting that we attend, or?
It varies. Sometimes we might be at the GC contractor meeting, sometimes maybe we have our own meetings that we have.
One thing I'd add is that when we're in that design, when, when the developer's in design review and they submit it and we're reviewing plans, that's, that's a really important part of a process to make sure that plans are approved, that are clear and understandable. And we do find ourselves in this weird spot sometimes because we've got a lot of standards. So the Public Works Department puts together design standards and construction standards, and those are readily available to the, the engineer that's designing the project. Sometimes a plan set comes in that's very confusing to look at. Doesn't mean that it didn't meet the standards, but it might be very confusing or messy. And that can lead to challenges in the field if those plans are approved that way. So there's a certain kind of quality control. And I'll say, my observation at times is that it's a struggle because you can see some things meeting the standard, and if you go back to the customer and say, make this change, well, making the change to the plans costs money and it takes time. So we call things out, like this is gonna, you know, this, I mean, we say it maybe in different words, but we identify where there's gonna be a challenge in the field. We put FYIs on plans at times, even if it's not something that is a, a code standard. But we have our own experience of, of seeing construction projects through. So you can see a plan set, you might see where something's gonna be a confusion. And we think that it's in the, you know, the city's interest, the contractor's interest that eventually is gonna do the job. To call that out as much as we can, to try to make for a nice, clean set of plans that's really easy to understand, meets all the city's standards. And that's a way to try to hopefully, you know, mitigate the, the potential for more in-field challenges that come up.
We used to have, for a construction project of 20 to 30 drawings, is now a 200 to 300, so it complicates the matter even more.
We see that from the old records when we try to dig them up to see what's under the ground. We see one or two page with a line on it. And we scratch our heads, saying, what's there? No, but to add to what Jeff was saying, one, a huge efficiency that the way that our inspection team is set up is the same inspectors that are out there inspecting the private development projects are out there inspecting our own capital projects. So they have the experience to know what it's like to be managing, managing and inspecting a project from the owner's side, as well as going out and working with the developers. So they're looking for solutions. So when there are challenges, they, you know, there are standards, we meet the standards, but they also know how to work towards solutions to help the developers meet the goals and help reduce those tensions that we talked about as well. So, just a, a background, so the volume of the FAC projects between 15, 2015 and 2018, we range from about 15 to sometimes up to 20, 25 FAC projects a year. Many of those will come in for review in a, in one year, and then we'll go to construction maybe a year or two later. So we don't see some of the full impacts until later when they actually go to construction. Now, really getting to the heart of why we're here tonight, and that is a precursor to an update that will be proposed in the 2020 fee schedule. That is the FAC fees themselves. So a little background on the FAC fees, last July, a, a, a cost of service fee analysis was, was presented to council. And then we came and discussed specifically some of the engineering fees and development fees associated with the cost of service fee in October of that same year. We, we discussed the FAC fees, and we, we discussed the construction permits at that time, as well as a couple other fees, I believe. What we saw from the study was from 2015 to 2017, the cost recovery on the FAC fees was actually about 40%. We talked to council about improving cost recovery, and we made some increases to the 2019 fees, which are estimated to achieve approximately 60% cost recovery. And we also said that we would come back to council and talk to you about some proposed additional increases and change in the FAC structure to e, to improve the cost recovery even more and possibly get to that 100% cost recovery target. So part of what we were talking about doing is looking at the structure of how FAC fees, how the permit fees are actually calculated. We wanted to see if we could simplify those fees a little bit. We also wanted to see if we could approach that 100% cost recovery without overburdening some projects that may have, they might be outcosted by having such a high permit fee. For instance, a single-family home development, if you get to a certain point where the fee, the fee structures set too high, it may not pencil out for that project to actually move forward. So we're looking for some sort of structure that would provide equitable increases to the fees without making those...